I'm going to read the open meeting law. Proviso pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The City Charter, section nine dash eighteen mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy which in short provides for citizen input on the planning board, for citizen input on planning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. There's a signup sheet that is located at the back of the room if any of you are interested in signing up to speak. Again, welcome. My name is Gloria Pacheco. I'm the Chair of the Fall River Planning Board. Present this evening are members, let me do a roll call. John Ferro, Chair is out, acting as Chair, being Vice Chair. Roll call Mario Lochiolo.
Here.
Beth Andrade.
Here.
Michael Farius.
Here.
Also present with us this evening are Dan Aguirre and Nina Cougar. And Chris. Okay. So, let's go on to old business pursuant to the agenda. Item number zero one, surety reduction on Fieldstone Lane, Brookfield Terrace, and Stony Brook Circle. We've received correspondence of this. Dan, do you have some input?
I do. If you remember, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about we were waiting for some finalized updated ASBILs which we had received. We've reviewed those ASBILs, done multiple site inspections, spoke with a consulting firm that had done all the construction inspections, and I presented you tonight with what I recommend as a reduction in the surety that had been posted for this project back when it had started on behalf of Bristol Pacific Homes. So, in your package, you have a cover letter that I completed, you have a copy of the initial cost estimate spreadsheet, you have a copy of the irrevocable letter of credit from Bank Five in the amount of 1.2 million, plus or minus, and then you also have the request of the applicant for what he, his reduction number was. So, the initial reduction request was for us to retain a total of $171,729 upon inspection and upon review of the ASBIL. It's my recommendation that we retain a total of $226,342.80. That would, that would allow a reduction in the amount of $995,157.20. So, what normally happens here is you will, you will make a vote one way or the other. We will then send a letter out to the applicant and his bank will then provide us a new letter of surety for this new amount. You'll see on the letter that I've given you today, it shows a number of, or the percentage of retainage for each of the individual items that, that still needed to be completed.
We, we all have that in our packet.
Yeah, subdivision's very well done.
Any comments from the board?
No, I know this was table last little round, and I think you've addressed everything that we talked about.
Anyone here regarding this item? No? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to support it.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. Item number one, Form A, applicant, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval. It's an A and R plan of land, file number twenty-three dash fifteen sixty-two. The owner applicant is Taco Incorporated. The property location is five eighty-three Bedford Street and five eighty Pleasant Street and five eighty-four dash five ninety-four Pleasant Street. Assessors map M twelve dash twelve dash zero zero three four and lots zero zero three five and lots zero zero four zero.
So, so what you have before you is, although it is, you know, called a Form A endorsement for a plan not to believe, to be required, this is not a subdivision of lots, this is a merger of lots. So, the zoning board of appeals had granted permission for the applicant to construct in addition. His real estate is comprised of multiple parcels. The construction of the building would now straddle two existing lot lines. So, you can't have that. That, that would create a non-conforming condition for zoning because you would be across one of your property lines. So, what this is doing is eliminating the interior lot lines so that the building can be constructed. So, the plan before you meets all the requirements for endorsement of an A and R, and it's technically merging multiple parcels into one. That's all.
Any comments from the board?
It's pretty straightforward.
Your motion?
A motion to accept it.
Is there a second? All in favor of item number one?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Business item number two, Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval, file number twenty-three dash fifteen sixty-two. Owner applicant seventy-seven dash seventy-three Widomo LLC. Property location seventy-seven dash seventy-three Widomo Street. Assessors map S dash zero eight dash zero zero twenty-two.
So, before you with this one is we have a singular parcel of land that contained two residential structures. They had gone through the zoning board of appeals process and were granted the appropriate relief to allow the subdivision to, to happen. The plan that they've submitted meets the requirements for endorsement. They have shown an access easement which was required as part of the zoning board approval. So, the plan before you meets the requirements for endorsement.
Any comments from the board? Anyone here in favor or in opposition to this? Any motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Mario makes a motion, a second. Beth makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number three, street acceptance of Gatehouse Drive. There is a request acceptance, there was a request sent us by the City Council for us to accept Gatehouse Drive extending from Maple Street to Prospect Street. And this was referred to us by the City Council on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and we all got, have that in our packet. Dan, any comment?
Yeah, so, yep, you have a, a cover letter from, from me with some narrative information which I'll provide, and then you also have one, we've reached out to the Department of Community Utilities. Whenever we have a roadway acceptance or a roadway discontinuance, we reach out to that office for any concerns that they have with regards to any utilities that are in the streets or any improvements that may need to take place. On the Gatehouse Drive issue, they basically just provided you a narrative of what the water main sewer line and storm drainage is that, that's in the street, and they have no issue with, with the acceptance, with the condition that when we send this, if you vote positively, positive recommendation to the City Council, that we provide them a monetary number of what the improvements are that need to take place in these streets. We've, we've discussed this in the past. When somebody comes and asks for roadway acceptance of a street, it's normally because they've called and asked for the street to be repaved or potholes to be fixed. We don't have the legal ability to spend Chapter Ninety funds, which is what the state gives us, on streets that are not an accepted city street. So, this is the process by which the city can now go in and make improvements to this street. Gatehouse Drive, for instance, you'll see in the, in the cover letter that I gave you, it is currently an unaccepted subdivision road. So, the subdivision was done in nineteen ninety. The construction was complete. However, there are steps beyond that. We all know now the process of, like we just did with Highland Farms Phase One, it has to go through the acceptance process for it to become a public way. Until then, they're private ways. So, that next step never took place for the acceptance part of it. The roadway wa, was constructed completely. This road is five hundred and eighty feet long. The right of way, which are the limits of the legal right of the way, is twenty feet, and that was allowed, that was granted a waiver through the planning board process. The paved way is between sixteen and eighteen feet. The gas company just recently went through, and you'll see what, what Liberty Utilities does is they'll go in and they'll put in a, a new gas main on a street, they'll put a temporary patch in that's two, two feet wide. The following year after settlement, they come back and do a standard nine-foot milling overlay of that entire patch area. We, we require that level of restoration. At the time that they were doing that, Tommy Chase, who lives on the street, came and asked me about can we do the remaining six feet that, that we have beyond that nine, and I had to regretfully tell him, I can't spend the city's money on a street that we don't, it has not been accepted. So, that's what brought on this process. So, on this street, there's about a six-foot, you know, six or seven-foot strip that needs pavement, needs a little bit of grading, there's some depression in, in some of the areas. The part that the gas company just did is fantastic. So, this brings us, or puts us in a place where we can provide access to the abutters at the city's cost. Then we, we deal with, you know, I don't know, did you guys get trash collection already? So, on all of these private ways, the city's always been very good about plowing, picking up trash where they, where they shouldn't be. Just like the post, the post office won't, right? The post office makes you go out to, you can come on up. The post office will make them utilize the, the general box out on the street because they don't have a heart. That's the post office, and that's fine.
So... That's not the reason, that's not the reason why the post office gave me. I spoke with the post office, they said that's their new method of delivering mail. It's quicker for a mail person to go to one box instead of come down the street. If we have packages, they come down the street, deliver the packages.
Do you want to stick your name and address for the question?
Sure. My name is Thomas Chase. I live at twenty-five Gatehouse Drive here in Fall River. I, I'll give you, I'll give you the whole backdrop.
We don't need the whole backdrop.
I was one of the individuals that...
He didn't need that.
No, it's quicker. Back in nineteen, nineteen ninety-two, I built my house there. At the time, the contractor decided to leave before he paved the street, took off. So, I went to the City Council back then, and we had the drain, drain layers bond. We moved from the contractor, so we had to come back to finish the street. So, since nineteen ninety-two, and then when we, when I built my home, if you look at the two wounds involved, they told us, nothing to worry about, the city will accept the street, we'll take care of it. So, that's why we never bothered, and it's like a private way, so nobody ever bothers us. But at the beginning, when we first moved there, we had to have, take all our trash to Maple or Prospect. I talked to the late Mr. Ron Costa. He was kind enough to send a trash truck down and see if they could do it. So, they, they decided to do it. Now, when the winter comes, I have an agreement with all my neighbors to remove your vehicles from the street, even if it's on the opposite side of the fire hydrant, to remove it, and so the city plows can come down. So, that's what's done there. On the corner, there's a, a residence there, a carriage house, it's not part of, I have, Mr. Dombro, the owner of this, is here, I have an agreement with him that his residents don't park on Gatehouse Drive because there's not, it's, it's tight for a fi, a fire apparatus to get in there to a fire hydrant which are on the east side. Now, I understand if it's accepted, Mr. Dombro wants to make a driveway there, and it's very tight with my neighbor trying to come out of his driveway at, at night. So, that's where we stand. I want to get the street set because there's six feet that is cracked, unpaved, looks like.
Yeah, and we try to get the gas company to do the whole thing, but of course, they're not going to.
They did, but they did come across the street to do half of it because there's five houses on the side they had to come, so it's like unpaved, a strip of pavement, then it's unpaved again, then they go down all the way, it's more pavement, so it's like patchwork on one side.
So, my recommendation to you is that we recommend to the council that the city accept the street, but with the caveat and the understanding that for the current work that needs to be completed, it's approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars. So, just, just so that the council is aware, because I've explained to the council in the past, it's all well and good to accept all of these streets, but none of these streets, or ninety percent of them, need substantial work, and this is just a method by which the landowners can get the work done. So, the City Council always wants to be fantastic people and, you know, give us, give us your wheat, give us your pork, you know, just like the, the United States way. And then I get the calls in my office of, okay, now we need to go fix this street. Well, there are two hundred streets that are on the list that need to be fixed that have been on there for the last ten years. This one is not going to leapfrog through the rest. So, I just want them to, to understand what the financial responsibility is that the city is taking on. Should we accept it? One hundred percent. However, we, we need to look at the ways of getting, a street like this where it's very minor work, that we should really hop on it while the other pavement is still fresh as well and just finish off the strip, th, this one is small enough that we can probably get to it. The next one's, the street's forty-five hundred feet long, so we have to look at that one a little bit differently, but my recommendation is that we do accept this and just let the council know what the actual cost is to do the final pass.
You did do that via memo very well, but I believe you told us before, but just to reiterate, your office does prioritize when the requests come in for the street, which streets get worked on.
That's correct.
Based on the budget. So, you have here a cost estimate of eighty-seven thousand.
Yep.
Basically to prioritize that among all the others.
Right, where, where it fits in the list.
Right.
It may be three years from now. It may be spring. So, when we get to the end of it, if we find some areas that we can clean up for small money, then we do that. We, we throw those in as well.
The other thing that I think we have to just take into consideration, once we own it, we have to maintain it.
That's correct.
Not only maintain it, but also we have to do snow removal and provide all those services. So, again, I think it's just important that the City Council knows that, and I understand they want to bless everything and be a good person, and it's a, it's a, it, it is a project that should be done, but the reality of it is it does cost money, and it is residual income.
Mr. Aguirre, I told you about the manhole cover that's at the end of the street?
Yes.
It's still, it's a catch basin, but what happened is...
They swapped out the cover.
They swapped out the cover, now it's covered and the water just goes right out because during the blizzard, they sent a front end loader down and it broke it.
Yeah.
And eighty-seven thousand, you want me to write the check?
You want to write it? I didn't win the lottery.
Mario?
Well, Mario, yeah.
All right, I bet good word on it.
Board members, any other questions?
That's the only thing I, and the only thing tra, with the...
So, what I explained to Mr. Chase was, once this becomes a city street, it now falls under the governance of the traffic department, and they will decide if parking should be allowed on either side of the street. One side of the street, not during a storm, during a storm, ticketing, all that comes into play now. That comes along with...
I understand.
Becoming, right, but I, I want everybody else to understand that that comes along with it.
There's not many other cars, it's, everybody has grown up just about now.
I drove down again today and one whole side of the street was almost completely covered in, in vehicles, and that was in the middle of the day. So, people do park on the street.
Yes.
But that's, that's not for this board to decide, that's up for the traffic department
I understand.
And the police department.
Did the emergency response, have any issues associated with it?
From what Tommy told me, you don't think in the past there's ever been an issue with ambulance, fire?
Ambulances have been down, they've never had a problem.
You probably don't need them often, right?
There's never been a problem. There's been ambulances down here, but there's never been a problem. My neighbor accidentally had a dryer fire one time, and the fire department doesn't come in through Prospect because that's another traffic issue. On the other street, they parked, Gatehouse goes north-south, and they're parking right as soon as you come out.
Yeah.
They, so they come up through Maple Street, which is easier to turn the corner.
I mean, it is, it is a through street.
Yeah.
Is it a one-way or two-way now?
It's...
Because traffic may decide they want it to be a one-way.
Well, what happens is until...
Which actually probably should be the case.
Until June Street became two-way.
Yep.
It used to go north to south. Everybody would drop their child off at the Westall School, and then all of a sudden, ooh, let's go up Gatehouse the wrong way. I mean, I almost got wiped out when I wanted to go to work.
Sure.
Car going the wrong way. You're not expecting, and here it comes flying through.
Yep.
But usually, ninety-nine percent of the time, nobody ever, Amazon's the only one that goes up that way. I guess his GPS has always got...
Well, they always give them the shortest route. They don't care about one-ways.
That's, so that's the only one that we deal with is Amazon going the wrong way. But everybody else abides by the traffic, and they all come see me, being a retired policeman, they all come, come see me.
So, you know the rest, it's a private way, but now it's going to be a public way, and like Dan said, traffic can decide if it becomes a one-way.
Well, back then, we were told it was going to become, so...
Oh, okay.
You know?
Yeah.
But politics plays the game.
Well, some people like having a private way, no one else can park there, so it's, we have, we listen both sides.
That's the only thing we have right now, and I guess the gentleman who's here wants to put a driveway in on the Gatehouse Drive, but right now, we can't because it's, he's not part of the...
Right, because he technically doesn't have rights to the private way, and we're going to get a lesson about private ways in a little while, and on, on some other, on some other petitions. But exactly, once it becomes a public way, then he has rights to it.
But he, he has rights to it, but how about a driveway? Because he's got one on his, on Maple Street.
He's got to apply for a curb cut opening, and that goes before the traffic commission and the City Council. You're only allowed sixteen feet total.
Total.
Doesn't matter if you have four streets, sixteen feet total for the property without City Council approval. So, there is a process to go through to do that.
Now, he has an egress so that he can petition for it, if this become, if this becomes a public way.
Right, but if I, if we put a, if they have to put a traffic sign saying like, no parking here in a corner.
Yep.
Then it's, because right now, and I have, he's here, and I, I get along very well with him, he has a camper on his property.
Let's worry about that when we get there.
Yeah.
Let's get the street accepted.
So, I, I do see the, all the names here on, were there, was anybody opposed to this?
No, they all want to get it done finally. I mean, all of the people that were here when I built were, I have sold and moved a lot of new people, but a lot of people, I've been there thirty-two years, people across the street have been there thirty, my neighbors have been there before me, we're all for it, we just want to get it done because when they were doing the street, they...
Yeah, it would have been nice to be able, and it would, so we've done streets like that, when the gas company's going in, and if there's a small amount to do, we have money set aside for these small projects to do the whole street curb to curb.
Because everybody was...
This would have been the perfect one to do that.
Everybody was like, you know, why? I said, it's because it's not accepted, and that's when I came to Dan and we decided, I got the paperwork going, and I went door to door.
So, we saw the names on petition. Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Mario.
Anyone else here in favor or in opposed to item, agenda item number three, the Gatehouse Drive? Sir, if you don't mind coming up, please?
I don't really have much to add other than...
Your name and, your name and address for the record?
I actually live on Maple Street, but my house runs on Gatehouse Drive.
Okay, what's your comment, sir?
I'm sorry, what was, what was the exact address?
Three two eight Maple Street.
Three two eight Maple, okay.
I'm all for it. I have not planned on investigating even putting in a driveway until he mentioned it, and maybe I will. But that's for a later date.
So, right now, you're in support of us accepting Gatehouse Drive as a public way?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a great, good evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor or opposed to Gatehouse Drive? Members of the board, any other questions, motions, comments?
I am satisfied with the explanation.
Do you want to make a motion, Mario?
Make a motion? I'll second.
Okay, Beth made the motion, Mario seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
And again, so that everybody understands, this is only a recommendation to the City Council. This does not make it a public way, the street's not accepted, only the City Council can, can follow through with that acceptance part. They ask for recommendations from other departments, so that, that's the only vote that this board can take. Enjoy the game. You got, you got to head to Boston?
Okay, next item, agenda item number four, street acceptance of Mohawk Drive. Request to accept Mohawk Drive extending from Indian Town Road to Mohawk Drive, referred just by the City Council on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Dan, do you want to give us a little primer?
Yeah, if I can, back history very similar to the last one, it seemed like in these, the late eighties and early nineties, the follow-through on, on all of these subdivision roadways wasn't necessarily completed. So, this was an actual definitive subdivision again, through the planning board, all the permitting process, the roadway gets constructed. Subdivision plan was in nineteen eighty-seven. However, when the roadway was done, the acceptance process again wasn't, this process that you see happening now never took place. So, this road, again, much longer, forty-five hundred feet. It's off of Indian Town Road, up, you know, into the reservation area, beautiful subdivision. It's a U-shaped subdivision that comes back out on itself. The right of way is fifty feet wide, pavement's approximately twenty-four feet. In the year and change that I've been here, we've probably gotten at least half a dozen to ten calls, that's just me, never mind City Councils that get calls, or Paul Furlan's office. There is an area in front of the detention pond where there are a couple of catch basins that over time, because it is the lowest area, the pavement has become extremely uneven and the roadway has failed. We have catch basins that can't collect water because pavement is heaved around them, so there's a stretch of about a hundred to two hundred feet that immediately needs to be corrected. So, we have in there approximate cost of those repairs is about a hundred thousand dollars to repave the entire road, which the rest of the road is in, let's call it fair to good condition in comparison to many of the other streets in the city. I mean, you can, I have a fairly low riding Audi that I can drive through there and not create a problem, except for this one area around these catch basins. So, when the time comes, in five to seven years, when the whole road needs to be done, it's a forty-five hundred foot long road. That's about 1.5 million today, probably going to be closer to two million at the time that we get to do it. And again, it's not that, that it shouldn't get done, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of the numbers and responsibilities that they're taking on.
And that'll be the same situation where constant maintenance, do they have trash removal right there?
I think you guys get everything, or complete service, and they even plow, right?
Yes.
And they've even gone out over the past number of years from what I could find, and they make temporary pavement patches, correct?
Wow.
The Water Department.
The Water Department does?
The Water Department is the one that...
Because actually, I, I went out again today and I saw that there were some recent improvements.
That was my fault.
Okay, no, that's fine, you should call, and, and, but that, that's what this process does.
I fell, I fell on the drain at the end of the street.
Right, also, I saw around that catch basin, they did put some pavement around.
Because I fell.
Yeah.
I opened up a can of worms, and I apologize for, you know, for opening up the can of worms, but I'm very upset.
Yeah.
Finding out that I moved into that, I'm the first house.
Yeah.
PH Leasing, when they did the subdivision for Martelli.
Yeah.
It was off twenty feet.
Wow.
I had to pay laser to come in and redo it.
Really?
So, the marker starts at my property.
Okay.
And then the whole, whole design went in.
So, so even when this, so this subdivision...
Yeah.
And it's, just quickly, when it originally started, and some of them do this way, it started off with the homeowners association that had ownership of the roadway system and the detention pond. There's one vacant lot that you see to the, to the north, where you see the little blue circle that encompasses the lot. That parcel has been taken for tax title purposes. So, the association basically became defunct. They didn't pay the taxes and they just let it go. So, the city had no, you know, no option other than for that parcel to take it. And so, from what I'm told from the Water Department, they have made emergency repairs to, to the pond, and actually, a number of years ago, I think, put in a new outlet pipe for the pond as well.
The conservation got involved.
Okay, so, this will, again, it will allow the city to go in and spend, the, the only monies that we get to, to fix roads are from the state, from Chapter Ninety, except for our, but we now, we've got a few extra dollars to do something this year.
Is the, is a, a particular parcel of road in the yellow, and is that the only one that they're looking to accept?
I mean, it was my understanding that, that it's the whole loop.
Okay, I just didn't know why that was highlighted just in yellow.
Do you know why?
That was my understanding from the way it was written from City Council.
Well, how did they read it? I know the description was, was poorly written.
Yeah, the only reason I say that is...
I think it's because it looped.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that, like, it should all be included, if you would think.
I agree.
But I wasn't sure if the yellow was just the four thousand five hundred.
I did, I did the description.
So read it, what does it say?
I have it at the top of my head.
Oh, you don't have it there, okay.
It's on the agenda.
But it says from which to which, so Mike.
Let's see. Mohawk Drive, request acceptance of Mohawk Drive, expected, oh, because it says extending from Indian Town Road to Mohawk Drive. So there's no other Mohawk Drive. So it would be Indian Town Road, back to Indian Town Road. So, that's fine, but when we send it to the council, because there's another one on one of the next streets, and trust me, we don't expect laypeople, when they fill out these forms, this is such an antiquated system for roadway acceptances. And just so that you know, the petitions that get submitted here are only required to be of twelve voters. They don't even need to be people on the street. So we only hear from people on the street at this point of, of the process, usually. Uh, unless they've all been involved in signing the petition as well. So it would be for the entire strip. And the one section, Mike, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, you see the blue? That's the detention pond parcel. So, you know, on those, where those catch basins are, probably a hundred feet either direction, those would be repairs that need to be done immediately. But the, the rest of the road would be further down the road.
Yeah, they just should know that they're talking about the entire loop, not just the yellow.
There is a portion of Mohawk Drive that is accepted.
That is accepted already.
That's already accepted, okay.
I'm not sure exactly where that, like, extends, because I, I went and I talked to Patty about it.
All right, so we, we should know those things before we come here, but we'll, we'll resolve it.
Because you're asked to have 1.5 million, it could be two million.
That's for forty-five hundred.
Yeah, so maybe just half of that theoretically?
But we don't know.
Yeah.
But we can correct our paperwork based upon, we'll put it this way. For the other half, we're already on the hook for whatever that is. So we can modify those numbers if there is a portion of. So let's say the, the remainder of Mohawk Drive that has not been already accepted, that can be the recommendation.
And you, in your memo, you had estimated five to seven-year completion for this Mohawk.
Well, that we wouldn't get to it for five to seven years, for the whole street.
Right.
Yes.
Because it's forty-five hundred, uh, feet that you had estimated.
Right, yeah. That, that's something that takes long-term planning. We, we only do streets that are that long, like, one a year. We only get 1.9 million a year from the state.
All right.
So it's very difficult to take on a large project. We usually do one large project, like you saw a good stretch of Stafford Road get done. Not much else got done that year, so it, it's difficult to make those dollars stretch.
Okay, anyone here in favor or opposed to item number four?
We're all in.
Do you want to come in, give your name and address for Nina for the record?
Actually, I got, I got a few questions, Bobby, now, for this board, maybe you can point it in the right direction.
Your name and address?
Charles Perrer, 403 Mohawk Drive.
Hi, Charles.
How are you? Uh, so, I just learned after nineteen years that this wasn't an acceptable road, right?
Yeah.
So my question is, since we've been paying that water fee, and this is our road, our retention pond?
Well, no, it's the city's detention pond now, because they took it. The city owns that land.
All right, so since this is our road, and we've been paying for all this?
Yep.
Why haven't we been paying for it?
Because your stormwater discharges to the city's detention pond, that's why.
I've seen them twice in nineteen years.
You can call Paul Ferland, Paul Ferland at the Department of Community Utilities is responsible for the maintenance of that pond and is responsible for the administration of the stormwater runoff fee. So, and there is an appeal process that you can go through, but it's through that department, not this one.
And who's in charge of the vegetation work on Indian Town Road?
As far as...
As far as all the vegetation coming into it?
Clearing the, the right-of, that would be the Department of Community Maintenance.
Okay, that's another call I have to make, because I've called him four times, no answer, no phone call back, so. I just want to be pointed in the right direction.
Yeah.
We call, we call, oh, we'll call you back, no.
Yep, no, that's who it would be.
Well, that's why it's important to understand, like, once you accept that road, you accept all the responsibility of the maintenance associated, not just the snow removal, but, you know, the vegetation, the cutback of the vegetation and suchnot, so.
Well, it's all lawn out here, so on this street it won't be so bad.
Yeah, I know that, I know that.
And, and we don't actually, so sidewalk maintenance.
There's no sidewalks.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying, in general on streets, cutting of grass, shoveling of snow, that is all the responsibility of the homeowner for their frontage.
And I'm the one that cuts the grass in front of retention pond anyways.
Yeah.
I've been doing it for, I've seen them twice my whole life living there, so.
But that's, that's a prime example of when you have somebody come in and do a subdivision, and they don't execute, I know Dan does a good job of making sure they're held accountable to get it finished, what they're supposed to do. And then when it's transferred over to the city, then you take on the responsibility of the maintenance and future potholes and whatever, whatnot, so.
Yeah, even though, but even though Martelli did that subdivision, somebody had to sign off on that, correct? From the city?
Yes.
I, I wasn't here in eighty-seven.
I understand, I understand, but we, I'm just saying, going back, somebody must have signed on on, on that street.
Yeah.
And there's stumps on the street that they plowed over. They just asphalt over the stumps.
Right, so it was a private, it was a private street initially?
Yeah.
And right now you're petitioning that it becomes a public way?
Yeah.
Yeah, but like Reed said in the first item agenda from last month, that, uh, he reviewed the surety we're holding back for us, another sub, uh, development. Because we want to make sure we have adequate funding in case the developer goes awry.
And we now are responsible for fixing the road, that was the first item.
Right, that was the first item we discussed.
That we, we hold money back until we're assured that everything is constructed completely. I can't say how well that was done in nineteen eighty-seven, I graduated from high school in eighty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Perrer.
Which, which makes me old enough.
Anyone else? Your name and address for the record, sir?
Hi, my name is Mike Remo, I'm from 305 Mohawk Drive. And just really quick, that forty-five hundred foot is pretty accurate.
Okay.
Because it's about nine-tenths of a mile long.
You walk it?
And by get, run it, I don't know.
So the forty-five hundred is actually not just the yellow, but the entire?
The entire loop.
Okay, well, then that's an accurate, accurate number that the city council will look at at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
How's it going?
Good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Good evening, sir.
752 Mohawk Drive. The thing, the reason why I'm coming here tonight is the word, uh, extension, extending Mohawk, that was the one that kind of threw, threw us off. They said, you guys, something on there said the word extend Mohawk Drive. We have an empty lot there that we fought years ago.
Okay, so I, I think what...
Behind, are you gonna just kind of wipe that out, or the extension?
Well, no, we're, we're gonna figure out, because I think what Nina is saying is that there is a portion of Mohawk that's already accepted. And that now they're extending the acceptance to include the remainder.
Any idea why was, uh...
Why they only accepted a, a portion of it? Because at that, maybe there was only a portion of it that was constructed. They could have done it in phases, where they came in and they did the first, you know, two thousand feet, requested that that got accepted, and then went on to the, the second half.
Okay.
Believe it or not, and I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, the record-keeping and what we're able to find in this building isn't always the greatest. So, so we piece together, you know, what we can. But what we're going to send to the council is that whatever portion of Mohawk, whether it's forty-five hundred feet or five feet, now becomes accepted.
Okay, so, bottom line was, because I know my neighbor's one...
So the entire loop will be accepted.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Yes.
Because I know my neighbor's been asking, and he did, he did before, I said, well, how can it be just half?
Because they could, you can, you can, you could, you could petition tonight to ask us to accept fifty feet in the middle of this whole thing.
Okay.
And that's what they have to act on.
Okay.
Does it make sense, but theoretically you could.
All right, so.
Typically, typically a developer will come in and do a phase-in based on purchasing sales of, of bad sites. So they might only go in a hundred feet, and once those are sold, they'll do another hundred feet and continue all the way around. And then when you get towards the end, they'll just build the rest of the road.
Come and send it, be just accepted.
But you haven't, yeah, you haven't, but you haven't accepted that as a city, so. But, yeah, I think just the, well, uh...
We'll clean up the language, before the city council votes, we'll make sure it's clean.
There's, there's one lot that, we, a few years ago, we, we fought to kind of, because there's, oh, there's other land behind.
Yeah.
It's somewhat landlocked and, uh,
Okay.
We were kind of afraid that, you know, what's going to happen, that I, I don't...
Well, I mean, when I look today, the two vacant lots, they're, they're owned by specific entities, because I wanted to see which ones the city owned. And the only one that I could find that the city owned was the detention pond one. I think the one in the middle is owned by the abutter on the next door to it, I think. And then, or is that the one in the corner that they're owned by the same? Okay.
In the very middle, that guy's...
Those are separate, okay.
Yeah, he started getting calls if he wants to sell, so.
And he doesn't want to sell?
And one on the bottom right is the house in there.
He owns both?
He owns one on the bottom right.
Okay, I got you. Interesting, okay.
That was the problem we had with the word extending.
Extending, yeah.
Because you told me they were going to extend going through that lot.
No, no, we're, we're just extending the acceptance of the existing road, yeah. That's all.
And there's going to be any other implications with that acceptance? I mean, we get, we get snow removal, we get the trash.
Yeah, but you want it paved, so that's what we, is the process to get there. So, we're working on that. So, I mean, if anybody were to ever to try and do something through those other lots, that, that's an entirely different process that you'd be notified as, as well. So, but we're not, nobody's, nobody's ever approached me about it.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraz.
What was your name again?
Uh, Frank Ferraz, F-E-R-R-A-Z.
Anyone else in favor or opposed to acceptance of Mohawk Drive?
I just have a couple questions. Because guess what? That first lot, that's mine.
Name and address for the rec...
My name is Maria Souza, and on that 625 Indian Town Road, and I am that corner lot with the house kitty corner to it. The marker's on my property, which I had to pay for. Conservation had gotten involved in this. And like you said, Dan, you need, you're going to go into the file and pull out all this paperwork to then present to the council to get this accepted.
Yeah.
All I'm asking, as the person who's been there for thirty-four years, is that it gets accepted, but gets accepted correctly, once and done.
Yeah.
We've had enough, I've had enough. Because on that corner lot, when you turn into Indian Town Road, there is four drains. You know the ones with the slots?
Yeah.
There's also the other drain that you have to pull the cap off of it to go into.
Man, hold on.
Those are the initial drains that were put in to go to that retention pond on the other side of the street. The piping's all there.
Okay.
Goes underneath between those lots, because the, the, only the first seven lots on Indian Town Road ever got approved in eighty-nine. Okay, after eighty-nine, that's when they put the road in, there was no houses there yet. They had subdivided the lots, it came out in the paper, there was a big conservation got involved. There is a, I have all the paperwork. So if I went in my file, I could actually, if I had known, I would have brought the files to you.
Yeah.
Goes back to eighty-nine. So it's frustrating to me to find out from Mr. Remo that the road doesn't exist.
Oh, it does exist, it's private.
I'm saying, wait a minute.
I live on a private road myself.
I live on a private road as well.
I'm just saying, seven thousand dollars, and wait a minute, it doesn't exist? What am I paying seven thousand for?
No, 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 it, it does exist, it's private.
It's a private road, yeah.
The point is, see, private? The average folks in here, when you build a lot that size, how can it be private? It doesn't even make sense.
My road is private too, we pay for our soup, we pay for our trash.
That's what the law is.
Yeah.
So shame on, shame on your realtor.
Right, when you bought it.
For not relaying the information to you. But, but technically, your address is Indian Town Road.
Yeah, did you, yeah, is it Indian? Back in eighty-nine? That, this was, I have the newspaper clipping when this came out. They go forth for the conservation, we went through hell to get it approved.
Yeah.
I got approved because I was grandfather, because I'm on Indian Town Road, big deal.
Exactly.
You know, but the point remains is getting those drains from where I'm towed, these folks are paying fifty dollars every three months, which the city council approved real quick. I have the date that they approved that, when we went to the city council meeting, to clean out the drains. Nobody has, nobody goes there to clean them up.
Yeah.
So your retention ponds that the city just took over them?
Well, I think it was a little while ago.
That's why it's a mess, because it, when all this stuff runs down the road into those drains, it goes underneath that, underneath those, that road into those retention ponds.
Yeah.
And my other concern is we're next to the drinking water, that's, city doesn't care about that?
Well, so the person that's in charge of cleaning that detention pond is, is also in charge of protecting the water supply.
Because right across the street on Indian Town Road, where I live in the quarter, you have the gate there, nobody can go in woods there, it's, it's reservation. My backyard is reservation, it's, like, wait a minute, so, all this time, it's like, to me, I'm, I'm a little bit upset because it's neglect on the city's part, that that road was never accepted and hasn't been updated.
Well, no, it's not the city's part, it's up to someone to petition.
It's not your fault, but my point is when this is done, whether it's you, Dan, or whoever does it, I called you the moment, they were amazing. They had leftover, they had leftover asphalt the day that I was out there.
Yeah.
And I figured out where the water was coming from. Because a lot of people have illegal piping, drainage coming out of their house onto the road.
Yeah.
And it was going into my property because I'm at the bottom. So what happened is the stone wall that I have there is sinking into the ground because the water loops and then just lands in front of my property. So because the road has not been kept up and the, the drain was fixed, I think, I forget who's planted the pump and went out there to fix it for me, because it was, it was huge, it was a mess. I fell, I got hurt, I couldn't take it anymore, I said, something has to be done.
Yeah.
But those four drains are right off my property.
Okay.
Now, when you have people, we're all septic tanks, all septic tank system over there, there's no sewage, okay? I'm the only one with Title V, because back in eighty-nine, it was mandatory you have a Title V. So I have five tanks on my property, it's crazy that I do. But when those drains still up, you can smell it. So now my concern is, is it, underground water is going to get into my drinking water, we have well waters, we have well tanks. So I want the street to be accepted, but my other concern is when that happens, is the water department then going to take care of, you know, getting about with our wells? Our septic tank system is another issue, so how does that work? Do we just let people?
That's privately, you are, you are responsible for your own well and your own septic system.
Ponds are not kept up, if the drainage is not done correctly, it, we can have a possible contamination.
Right.
And, and which can also include all of the drinking water, we're so close to it, we're not that far from it.
Right, but this is, this is rainwater that we're talking about.
Right, but rainwater can turn into, you know, we, look at the rain we've had this year.
I understand.
Yeah.
But rainwater is clean.
Oh, right, but those, that rainwater, when it's coming down that street,
Yeah.
took all the, because those properties don't have sidewalks.
Right.
Guess with all the mud and the dirt and, and it's all in the drain.
Yeah, and it's, and it's supposed to be cleaned, but for the purposes of allowing water to continue to flow.
Yeah, but my point is, these people are paying, I, I'm on Indian Town Road, so I, I guess because I'm on Indian Town Road, I don't get the bill, but, you know, they get a bill. So my concern is, I have four drains out there, I'm the one that cleans them out. Every time it rains, I'm out there with my Portuguese, I'm out there with the broom, cleaning out the drains because I don't want no more junk to get in it, because I don't want it to hurt my neighbor.
And, and that's very nice of you, and that's appreciated.
Same thing with the snow, I'm out there shoveling the snow off the drains, so, yeah, they shovel, they come and they plow, but they don't clean those drains. So the school buses with the kids in it, it turns into a sheet of ice? You don't know how many times the school bus has gone into that, the, the woods in front of it?
So now this is Indian Town Road, or this is on the subdivision? I know where you live, but when you're saying where it ices up.
It's right there.
In Indian Town or on the new street?
At the bottom of Mohawk Drive, because of the situation. Mohawk Drive comes flying, that water comes flying down
Yeah.
to Indian Town Road, which is a city road, am I correct?
You are correct, and that, and that's what I'm asking you.
They, I'm on Indian Town Road, that road has not been repaved and not been repaired.
So then you have, so, so you have, asking for the repair of Indian Town Road
Yes.
is something completely different.
Because it, no, wait a minute, my Dan, because your people, when I called, told me because it's at the end of Mohawk,
Yeah.
they can't touch it.
Not true.
So the whole bottom of this road, when you go into, you went there today, right? When you go in Indian Town Road, you go over the loop, the end of the Mohawk Drives on both sides?
Yeah.
Look, have you seen the patches that are put there?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I just said, I saw some of the patches that they've done.
I've never seen anything like it, usually they used to cut a little thing and you, you mend it correctly and, but they're back there. So you're talking about money and what's costing the city the money when, when we need to fix this road?
Yeah.
But every time your department goes out there.
It's not my department, I, I don't, I don't, I don't patch roads, we, we completely resurface roads.
If they go out there and they dug up one of those holes and it's done incorrectly,
Yeah.
it's bad money, it's expensive.
It's a band-aid, of course, it's a band-aid.
Mrs. Souza, you did recognize, uh, the memo that Dan put together, we have lots of streets that need repair in the city of Florida. So you're, you're not necessarily going to be fixed next week, maybe a few years, five to six, seven years.
You're also wasting taxpayers' money.
Yes, we understand that.
But it's done the wrong way, and it's been going on for thirty-four years.
Yeah.
And when I do ask, they actually, I had to ask them what this was, they told me it was a berm, which I didn't know what that word was.
Yeah, well, no, it, it, it's on the edge of the pavement, and I saw they put some behind your catch basins.
So they had leftover asphalt, which they, you know, you goes back and they just dump it because you can't reheat it.
Yeah.
I asked the gentleman when they came out, the boys that came out, if they could increase that berm so that when the water came flying down Mohawk Drive, it wouldn't go into my property. And then effectively, the septic tank...
So that's the, that's the Department of Community Maintenance,
Right.
who I, who I referred to before.
Yes.
Not the engineering department, not the planning department. So those types of repairs, those are done by city employees
Right.
through that department. So those types of repairs, those are done by city employees through that department. When, when, when we, when I say it's one point five million to go back out and redo this whole street, the city does not do that work. We contract with private contractors to do it. The city does not do those, those big, those big repairs. They're not capable of doing it.
You told us earlier that Paul's throwing in the drain and the sewer.
Paul Ferlin. That's in utilities. Yep. Yep. So anything with regards to cleaning out a catch basin, a pipe, any of those things, those are utilities. Repairing and patching of existing roads would be the Department of Community Maintenance.
DCM.
Exactly. The construction of new roads or reconstruction, that falls under the Engineering Department.
Because back in the old days, it wasn't done that way.
No, it wasn't. There's been an entire reorganization. There were so many different crisscrosses and nobody's responsible. I understand. I understand completely.
We don't know that it's not, we don't know that it's an outside contract.
No, you know.
It's very confusing.
I know. And we're here, we are here to provide answers.
It gets to the front of it, but again, knowledge is power. But if people don't know, then we can't fix it. There's lack of communication. And now you just, my worst nightmare, you're telling me that this is going to go back to City Council.
We have to vote on it. If we approve it, it'll go back to the council.
Yep.
Yes.
Once you set it all up, and then City Council's going to have to approve this.
That's correct.
And they probably will approve.
All we're doing is giving a recommendation. If we say no, then the council might hold it.
If we have a lot of citizens opposed to it and we hear that their arguments are valid, we could theoretically vote no.
Right. But at this point, I mean, most of the people couldn't be here, so.
No. We saw the petitions. We saw.
So you're in favor of it becoming?
Thank you, Ms. Sousa. Thank you very, very much.
That's okay.
Isn't Indian Town Road, if it doesn't get fixed?
If anybody wants to talk about process and anything other than a specific acceptance, come see me in my office. And as you stated, my staff will, will provide any answers and I will as well.
Dan, are you in this building even? Because half of the people are not in this building.
Nope. I'm in that building. We're all in this building.
You're all in this building?
Fifth floor.
The water pump.
Nope. Fifth floor. Fifth floor.
Any other citizens in favor or opposed to this petition? Anyone else want to come up?
Thank you, Bea.
Yes, sir.
Is it in favor or opposition of the acceptance? If it has nothing to do with acceptance, come see me and we'll talk about it.
All right. Dan, before we, if we vote positively on this, could we, when we send it to the City Council, research, because it does say extension. I'm wondering if half of the road was accepted way back when, the developer dropped the ball at some point.
And it may have been.
Yeah. So we'll get that clarified, right?
It could, yeah. So it's whatever, we will, we'll do the next round of research.
I should be tabled until we have more research because you had estimated one point five million in the next three, five, seven years to get to this project, except for the urgent matters on the street.
I can, I can change my estimate based upon what, that length of road.
Board members, any comments, concerns?
I mean, it's foolish to come back for another month when we can just resolve it going forward and clearing up paperwork.
I mean, you're the one, you're the one who's going to have to figure out how to pay for this or where you get it and how it goes into the slot.
Yeah. So that number isn't, isn't something that you are, they're not asking you for a number. We're just providing them additional information, which I can change that number based upon the linear footage of road that they will now be accepting.
And you don't, you don't check that with all the research?
The only thing that I would make sure that you would check is, and I know this is way back when, you're never going to recoup that money, but the reality of it is, it's never going to happen. Yeah, they're all probably going to be issued, but just to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future, that if a private entity comes in and they promise to build, that you're keeping them accountable right now.
Yeah. I mean, again, this was, I'd say the last fifteen years have been, everyone has tightened up on, because they've seen so many horrible situations of land being developed improperly.
Yep.
So even to a site plan review process and everything, we hold people's feet to the fire and do not sign off on things until they're complete.
And that's what we just.
It makes my days long, but that's what we do.
That's what we just did. And we tabled it to this meeting.
Yeah.
And we just said the same thing. We didn't feel comfortable about what they did. And once you feel comfortable, and they did exactly what they were supposed to do, then they'll take acceptance of it, so.
Is there a motion, Mike?
I, I, I accept this to go forward to the City Council.
Make a motion. Is there a second motion? That's second. Is all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item number five, street discontinuance, Ash Street. Should we take these together?
You can. They're all.
They're all the same.
We'll take three separate votes, but we can have a discussion on all three of them.
Because they all.
They're all similar. They're all in the same location, but there are nuances to each one that is a little bit different.
So we'll take Ash Street first?
So let's do them separately then if they're nuanced.
Yeah, we can do that first.
Item number five, street discontinuance of Ash Street, request to discontinue Ash Street, from Ash Street to Globe Street, referred to us by the City Council on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Dan?
Okay. So we're going to have a history lesson on private ways, public ways, acceptances, discontinuances. We'll start off with that. So similarly to what we just discussed here, where this is a private way and not an accepted city streets. There are a number of streets in the city that get laid out. They don't get constructed. So they never get accepted. They become private ways. Private ways in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, people who abut the private way and the municipality have rights to the way for access, utilities. However, the landowners on either side of a private way own to the center of the road. That does not mean you can impede on someone else's rights that have the same rights as you do in that street. So there, there are conditions where a landowner may own both sides of the private way. So they would own to the center line of the way and ownership would be contiguous through the way. What's important about a private way, and the petitions that are before you today are to discontinue the private ways. The city does not have the ability legally, City Council or otherwise, to discontinue a private way.
Excuse me, Ash Street is currently private?
All private. All three of these tonight are private, unconstructed ways.
So they're paper streets, basically?
Paper streets. But, but there are paper streets that are accepted.
Okay.
So one of them, for instance, and I actually had done the work for Walter Furman, there was a portion of Liberty Street that was an accepted paper street. That can be discontinued. You have to own something to be able to discontinue it. All the City Council can do on these is relinquish their legal rights to the way, which would be relinquishing their rights to utilize it for access if they needed to run utilities. So what's being requested of the council, the council cannot provide. We cannot extinguish someone else's rights to the way. We don't have the right to do that. If these became public ways and we own the way, we can then discontinue it. But if we don't own the way, if it's not an accepted street, we can't discontinue it. So what we did on these, so there are three, and we'll deal with Ash Street first. Again, we reached out to the Department of Community Utilities and I'm going to read to you what their summary is. So, "Street discontinuance, Ash Street, request discontinuance of Ash Street from Center Street to Globe Street, referred to the City Council on September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three." DCU comments, "There's a water main on Ash Street, ends at Center Street and does not continue south connecting to Globe." So they're just reporting facts to you. Sewer, "The section of the street has an eighteen-inch VCP sewer line that runs north from the approximate middle of the mill to Center Street. From the approximate center of the mill to Globe Street, there are no sewer lines." So in a half of this Ash Street, there's actually a sewer line that the city owns in one portion of it. Stormwater, "There's an overflow from Cook Pond as well as drainage from the eastern portion of the mill property in the neighborhood that runs above this area and under the abandoned mill. There is a pond owned by the mill in this area just east of the mill, two outlets, and he goes into the different types of drainage that's currently in there." So their concern on Ash is that there are municipal utilities in the street. So he, on Ash Street, he specifically asked that you do not recommend that Ash Street be discontinued. That's from the Department of Community Utilities. And again, he wants to maintain whatever rights the city has to get in there and repair a utility, if so be it. Now, we'll back up a little bit. Has nothing to do with ownership. The landowner to the west, which is the old Duro Mill Project, they own to the center line of Ash, the whole length, from Center Street to Globe. All of the landowners on Evelyn's Way, the condominiums at seventy-five Griffin Street, there's an open space parcel in the middle that the city owns, that's zero. And then there's another condominium development at three thirty-two Globe. For their portions that they have but Ash, you extend those lines, they own to the center line adjacent to their parcels. So ownership is one thing and rights are something else. So we cannot extinguish someone's rights. And on a private way, all we could do is extinguish our own rights, which the Department of Community Utilities has recommended that we don't. For instance, three thirty-two Globe, the condominium development that's there, they utilize their rights for access in utilities when they develop that parcel. Their driveway runs through Ash and then into their property, perfectly legal. They didn't block anyone's access. They're not impeding anyone's access. As a matter of fact, they're improving access for the other adjacent parcels. So the way will always exist, whether through easement lines or, you know, it's so different than, than public ways. And what happens here is that the City Council gets paperwork and it goes through the process. All we can do is give a recommendation. So on Ash Street specifically, the Department of Community Utilities is requesting that we do not relinquish our rights in Ash Street.
Thank you, Dan.
That's Ash.
I think we also have some correspondence regarding this particular.
Yes, we do have, yeah, we did get some. If you want to read that into it.
Okay. Well, I'll do the correspondence and I'll see who's in here in favor or opposed. So October fifth, twenty twenty-three, from Michael Belida, spelled B-E-L-E-D-A.
And this was for Ash, for all of them?
For sixty-six South Beacon Street.
No, like which, which, which agenda item?
I think it might just be Center Street, actually.
Is he here?
Oh, wait. No, it's.
This says.
Mr. Belida, is he here tonight?
It does mention Ash Street in there.
It says specifically item number five.
All right. So we should.
I'll read it aloud. "I am submitting this letter to the Planning Board in the event." Is, are they here by any chance? No?
No.
Okay. "I'm submitting this letter to the Board in the event I am unable to attend the Planning Board meeting hearing on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three at five thirty PM. My property abuts Center Street on the north side in the area of South Beacon Street and Ash Street. Center Street provides a fifty-foot vegetation buffer for my property and I am concerned that the vegetation buffer could be destroyed by the discontinuance of Center Street in that area. Center Street is an unimproved private way for which the city has no liability or responsibility for and runs west from Ash Street, crossing South Beacon Street and continuing west to Bay Street. I urge the Planning Board not to recommend, item number five, the discontinuance of Center Street from South Beacon Street to Ash Street, referred by City Council on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, for the following reasons. Number one, discontinuing Center Street from South Beacon Street to Ash Street would extinguish the public access to Center Street in that area. Number two, schoolchildren from Cuss Middle, Cuss and Viveras Schools access Center Street to and from school in that area. Number three, according to Mass Law, discontinuing Center Street in the area could seriously affect my rights to Center Street. Number four, in the past, the Furman Company has requested a discontinuance of Center Street and been denied in a proposal to discontinue Center Street and construct a single-family home on Center Street has been denied. Number five, there appears no purpose or anything to be gained by the developer or anyone in discontinuing Center Street, an unimproved private way from Ash Street to Beacon Street. Lastly, number six, on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at the ZBA hearing, the developer withdrew twenty-five proposed parking places on Center Street between Ash Street and South Beacon Street. And their attorney stated at the ZBA hearing that, that they had no plans for the Center Street area. This occurred after September twelfth referral by the City Council. That's the end of the letter.
Okay. What I would comment is that his comments are all having to do with Center Street and not Ash.
Yeah. But they say item number five, so that's why.
I don't know where we get the item number from, but.
Okay, perhaps that's true. Anyone else in here in favor?
There was a revised agenda. Is that why?
Okay. Anyone here in favor opposed to the discontinuance of Ash Street?
I just have, I just have Cheryl Demora, thirty-five Evelyn's Way. So from what you read, we talk to the Utilities Department of all that information. I just want to make sure I understand all this information.
Yep.
Ash Street right now is a paper street.
Correct. Private way.
And it is, what you're saying is, is, we're talking about it's a private way and it is the relinquish of the rights, not ownership.
Correct. The ownership, the ownership does not change.
Right. Correct. So basically, they're recommending to keep everything the same, paper street, leave everything as is with the utilities and whatever they're talking about because of what they are, they are giving you the information regarding the paper street from Ash to Globe, basically.
Yeah. So what the Department of Community Utilities is saying, and again, this has nothing to do with erasing the lines, the lines of the lines. All this, all the City Council can do is relinquish whatever rights the city has. They can't relinquish your rights because they don't own your rights. So your rights are in effect whether we discontinue ours or not. So on this, it just happens to be that the Department of Community Utilities wants to be assured that the city retains its rights.
Right.
So their recommendation is to not be discontinued because there are existing utilities in the way.
Yeah. And because they want you to keep, keep it the same.
Yep.
People like whatever is there, the electrical, whatever, the city would still maintain or do whatever they need to do for that.
Well, the city only, the city only maintains its utility, which is the sewer line that's installed in the street. Nothing else. No.
But, yeah.
Electric, electric pole's going to be the electric company. We don't, we don't provide electricity.
Okay. But that, that, they still go in and maintain and do what they need to do for that.
Of course, yeah. Every, whatever rights anyone has today, those rights will remain.
Yeah. Okay.
This process can't take away those people's rights. This process can only allow us to give up ours, the city's.
And then let me ask you, if it, if it was reversed, what would that mean to the owners around, around the, say, okay, like right now they're saying, no, don't discontinue.
Yep.
But if it was to be discontinued, what would that mean to, to us as owners?
Would mean nothing to you.
Oh, but what if?
All we can do is discontinue whatever rights we have. We don't have the rights to discontinue yours. So whatever rights you have today, there's nothing that the city can do. So the only way that this can ultimately be a private way that can be discontinued is everyone that has rights to that public way is part of the petition and is agreeance that they want the private way to be extinguished.
But what would be the advantage to discontinue that anyway? What would be the advantage?
Because then you, then you would technically, so your backyard would now get twenty feet bigger and you could put a shed in it. You could put a fence. You could make more yard. Right now, you can't because you can't block everyone else's rights to use it for access.
So they could take that ten feet.
And it would become, well, it would be half. So the street's forty. You would get to twenty feet. They would get to twenty feet. But that's only if everybody says, yes, we agree to extinguish it. And that has to get done through the land court and that's not something that this board or the City Council can even do.
I agree with what you're saying there based upon all that stuff that's going on underground and all of that.
Yeah.
So that's the city that we're voting this for, the city's rights, not your personal, private rights.
Do you know where the utility is, Paul?
Well, what Paul said was it was halfway down the mill. So I'm assuming it at about that section. Yeah, exactly.
I have one utility pole right in my backyard.
No, just the sewer utility is all we're talking about.
It's all underground, so.
No, thank you for going over that and explaining.
Yep, no problem. It's important that everybody understands the process.
Anyone else in favor, please, sir? Your name and address to the record?
My name is Rick Cook and I live at eighty-five Evelyn's.
You don't want to come up?
It's actually my light.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Um, no, I know last time at the zoning board, you was saying about, you know, ownership of half, but you can never block it.
Correct.
So what would happen now is they're going to put a retaining wall and so, so what happens with that remaining?
They, they, they would not be able to put the retaining wall within the limits of Ash Street. They would have to put it on the edge of Ash Street. Because they can't block, they, they can't fill half of Ash because then now they're blocking you from potentially. If you decided, I want to build Ash Street from Center to Globe, you have every right to do it. So does everybody else that has frontage on that street. And they can't block that from happening. That's why you, they can't, even though they own it, other people have rights for the purposes of different types of uses. And that, and that's what happens here.
What confuses me is, I know you mentioned about the shed situation, not situation, but a kind of situation, but the zoning board meeting that you can never obstruct that way, like with the shed. But now you're saying if they do this, if they discontinue it, the ownership still stays, but then you can actually put something on that.
Correct. Because everyone's rights are extinguished. But that's only if everybody agrees to extinguish everybody's rights. That's very difficult to do. But, and what will be different on the third one tonight, there's a street called Vine Street that no one even knows. It runs through the mill and they own on either side of it. Completely different issue. There's no utilities. The mill encompasses it already. That one, we're recommending that the city gives up its rights. But that still doesn't mean, so if, if, it's different because they own both sides of the street entirely. If you owned one side of the street, then you would still have rights to that street, whether it went through their building or not. But that's different because they own the same thing. Every, every circumstance is a little bit different based upon the abutting ownership of the parcels that surround it.
Okay. Anyone else in favor opposed to this petition? Board members? I'm a little concerned personally that the Department of Community Utilities recommended we don't forfeit our rights because we do have access to the sewer lines. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah. And if you, by all means, if you want to seek out corporate counsel's opinion on private ways, by all means, go right ahead. He's going to call me, but you can, we can go through that process.
When I was a lock clerk, I did a whole lot.
I'm not, I'm not opposed. It's, it's, private ways are very difficult to, to deal with because everyone's rights are so limited, but they're in existence forever until you dissolve them through the court.
Land court. I did that when I was a lock clerk in Duxbury.
Okay.
Uh, any comments?
The comment that I can make to all of you, I'm getting education tonight. And here, each and every one of you, I feel for everyone. But we able to recommend and now what the city will do it and it better do it because we live in a good city. So what Dan is doing it, an excellent job, that explanation, I don't fully understand. I don't, you know, to understand that the randomification of private land, paper street have been involved before and so on. But I didn't think it would exist this much within a city of four of them.
There's so many of them. So many of them.
I look at you to give our recommendation. What, what would, what you recommend for Ash Street?
I would say based upon the recommendation of the Department of Community Utilities and the information discussed here tonight, that you recommend that we do not discontinue Ash Street.
I would make a motion.
I would make a motion to say, yes, I agree. Especially having the utility there. Because you're going to need to maintain that even if it's not, it's never utilized, but you have to.
Who's making the motion? What motion are we making?
I make the motion that the City Council does not, does not accept the.
Not discontinue Ash Street.
Ash Street.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Item number six, the old item number five on the agenda. "Street discontinuance of Center Street, request to discontinuance of Center Street from South Beacon Street to Ash Street, referred to us by the City Council on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three." The prior letter I read from Michael, that's in regards to this agenda item. Dan, want to give us a little summary?
Yeah. So very, exact same situation, much shorter section of, of road. And again, we reach out to the DCU. There are no water lines in the area. There, there are drainage lines at the intersection of Center and Ash and that drainage discharges westerly towards Bay Street. However, the exact route, they don't know at this time. There are drainage pipes and structures that run through the area. The engineering department was involved in a drainage project a few years ago, which was that they installed some additional drainage lines. I couldn't find any, anything to that. And lastly, the Department of Community Utilities needs to maintain its access through Center Street for ingress and egress. So they said, based on the above comments, the city should maintain control along those portions of the street that contain water and drainage lines. I have nothing else to add for, for Center Street.
Any members of the community here in favor or in opposed to this item number six? Yes?
I just have a question. Basically, if, basically for you, say they discontinue a street, do they take that street sign away officially?
Well. Well, what happens out here is, the street sign, let's say we're looking at the corner of Ash and Center.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a street sign there that says Center.
Yeah.
That, that, that's to show the other side of Center heading east. So, they would leave the sign, no matter what. And the same thing with Ash. If they discontinued Ash, the sign that's there for Ash is for the naughtily portion of Ash. We, the, the, the way that these streets run, they run for blocks. And then certain portions of them are either built, accepted. So, when the city lays these streets out at the beginning of time, this one was in early nineteen oh seven. So, they lay out streets as a framework for things to get developed. This is before subdivision control law, all those different types of things. So, they lay out a grid that people can buy land and decide how it gets developed and what roads get built. Some of them, some of the roads don't get built. Down here, it's a lot of the roads that didn't get built. A lot of it because of the, the heavy industrial, you know, activities that went on during all of these different mill complexes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Again, on this one, the community, Department of Community Utilities recommends that the city retains, it's right to the paper street, so, um, again, I'm not, I'm not too supportive of this one. I know, any other comments on the board? Mike, your thoughts?
Yeah, my, my only thought on this is that if there's any type of utility in there, that they, at some point, sometime, you're gonna have to maintain it. And so, if they relinquish their rights on that, then they're out of luck to try to maintain it. I mean, that's kind of my only...
In this case, it's the water and drainage lines that they're referencing here.
And what's important is that, that the recommendation is you're not recommending the discontinuance of our rights. You're, you're not recommending that they don't discontinue the entire way, because they don't have the right to do that.
Right, but just retaining our, our current rights.
You're, you're retaining our current rights, not discontinuing our current rights.
Right.
I don't really see any advantage of dis, relinquishing your rights to that. I mean, especially when there's utilities here.
I, I, I understand only with my, because of what my past practice has been, is why they're doing this. However, it's not my job to tell you why they're doing it. Maybe somebody should have been here to, to explain that. But even, even if they did come to explain, I don't think the city has the right to do it, or the ability to do it.
Do you have a motion?
I have a question. When you say they, oh, what do we say in our city?
So, no, so, Duro, the, that mill to the west, they, I believe, they put these petitions together, because the, the streets all contain, revolve around their real estate. So, that's who I believe submitted this for the purpose of them developing this mill. And it may have been when they were initially thinking of utilizing it for parking. And when they appeared before the zoning board of appeals, because I think this came in before the ZBA, we made it clear to them that they could not build in their half. Even though they own the land, they cannot impede other people's access by constructing parking spaces and allowing people to park. So, my guess is, you know, the need for this going forward may or may not still be needed. However, we have to go through the process. But the intention was, it, it has to do with the development of that mill project.
They're, they're just gonna, there's, they're going to obtain half that up to the middle of the road, and then use that as additional space to, if they wanted to design it for, so, do... Yeah, no, I understand that, it's, it's a better solution than...
We have a letter of opposition from Michael Belida, four sixty-six. Right, that, so I just want to remind the board that we have a letter on record, an opposition. The person could not be here. So, do we want to not recommend the discontinuance? Or what, how does the board feel?
I have another question for you. By discontinuing these streets, we have the right in our planning board, per se, to recommend that it's something that I fully, in here, I don't have a full knowledge who and why these streets should be disconnected, I mean, discontinued, excuse me.
Well, so, i- if you were going to allow the discontinuance, I think it would be fair for you to ask the, the applicant, why are you asking for us to discontinue the street? And without being provided that information, we can only, we can't hear from both sides of the argument.
But again, the community, Department of Community Maintenance wants us to keep our rights to those lines.
And that's all we can, that's all we can give up. I think, I think they felt, that either the attorney or the applicant felt that we had, or the city has the ability to extinguish these ways entirely. And I do not believe that is the case. From my research, consultation with other legal experts regarding the matter, as recently as, again, as of this morning, I do not believe we have the rights to, to deal with that. And again, the city council, when it becomes to the council, this is only a recommendation to them. They may decide to request corporate counsel opinion before they make their decision.
Again, in my mind, the fact that we had one of our professional, you know, departments recommend that, they researched it, and they said, quote, "Based on the above comments, the city should maintain control along those portions of the street that contain water and drainage lines." That, that weighs right ahead with me. That's my personal opinion. Because that's why we rely on the professionals to review this and give us their opinion. And they're saying for us not to accept the discontinuance. Do we need more time to think about this? Board members, what are your thoughts?
My point of view, if I, if we possible continue and get more information, I would say table.
But my, my only question is, if this was something that was urgent for them, they should have been here representing why they were trying to accomplish this. And I understand, I do this for a living, too. You know, if I was on their side and I was designing this, if I could get another halfway of a roadway, that entire length, then I could utilize that for stormwater management, I could use it for parking, I could use it for open space, all these things, but we don't know what that is. But there is impact associated that, with that to the city and to the city utility, people who are, have to maintain that. So, that's kind of my, my thought process to that.
Nina, do you know who actually submitted it to the council?
Yes, it's in your pocket.
What happens is, we, we get it from the council. They don't submit this to us.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So...
So, the council just refers it, as it goes to them first.
Dan, in order to go to land court, they need to give it all, all these rights, and then the petition land court, that's why they want to give it to us.
So, this is the petition that they submitted. And so, it was the property owner of one-ten Chase Street.
They signed the petition, or they submitted on be, their behalf? Is there like a couple letter, or?
Um, there is, it's in that file. The first one.
Right, so the attorney's trying to relinquish all the rights, then the petition will land court to take over it.
And then they put, like, in Exhibit A, where they said that they wanted to repurpose the property. So, it is what Dan was saying, that they wanted to use up to the center line. I don't think that they realized that they couldn't at first, even if this was discontinued. I don't think they realized that.
All right, so Tommy Lawrence submitted it on behalf of the owners of one-ten Chase Street. Okay.
But my understanding is that both sides of that have to relinquish that at, at the end of the day. So, you'd have to get everybody to agree upon that. You just have one entity, which is the owner of the mill.
Right.
I don't think they realized that it was, that it was already a paper street.
Okay.
Well, they need to, they need for us to give our rights in, in order to continue with land court.
Well, they, they had changed the plan so that they didn't need to use any of the paper street for ZBA after. So, I think they did this before ZBA.
Gotcha, okay.
But if you want a table to get additional information from whomever, or give them the opportunity, we already voted on the other one, Ash Street, so we can't take that vote back.
Right, right.
I, I, I feel, I would vote the exact same way. The reason B is because you have the utility department who needs to maintain it.
I, I think, I think, I think the attorney and the applicant felt that the city could give them more than what we actually can, and we can't. And the procedure to do that is through land court, as Gloria stated. And that may be a process that they'll attempt. But now, that will most likely require everyone that has the rights to sign off on the rights, ours included. And the Department of Community Utilities has given you a letter saying they, they feel that we should not relinquish our rights to the way.
I wholeheartedly agree. I, I, I think I would vote the same way. I'll make a motion to vote the exact same way that we did on Ash Street.
So, you make a motion that we vote not to accept the discontinuance of Center Street?
Exactly, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do a roll call, roll call, Beth.
Yes.
Mario?
I'm sorry?
Let us do a roll call. Beth, are you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Mario, you asked me yes, Mike, yes, thank you. Okay, item number seven, street discontinuance of Vine Street. Requested discontinuance of Vine Street from South Beacon Street to Ash Street, referred to us by the city council, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
So, as I, as I discussed a little bit before, thi- this one is, is clearly different, where the applicant owns both sides, all frontage of Vine Street. So, they own to the center line of the way. There are no utilities located within Vine Street, as you've seen in the letter that was submitted from the Department of Community Utilities. And they see no reason that we can't extinguish our rights to that portion of Vine. It's, it's completely encompassed by their, by their building already. Very difficult to even find a plan that showed and referenced it, but, but we did find a couple. And that, that is in the location, and I believe it's on their, their petition as well, and their ALTA survey plan that shows the location of it. So, again, in conjunction with Department of Community Utilities recommendation, my recommendation to the board would be to positively recommend to the council that we relinquish our rights, whatever rights we have to the street.
And there's no utilities, nothing, I'm reading his letter right now.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I, I think that's wise.
Yeah, I'm glad that the, the community utilities offers no objection, so it seems pretty straightforward. Board members, any questions, concerns? Any motions? To accept the discontinuance of Vine Street, or?
Well, the discontin, let's say the discontin, we recommend the discontinuance of our rights in Vine Street.
I make a motion to approve.
So, Mario makes a motion to recommend?
I second it.
That we dis, uh, sorry. Recommend that we...
Recommend.
Send to the city council discontinuance of Vine Street. Thank you, Mario, and Michael, Mike seconded it. All in favor, roll call, Beth?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
Gloria, yes? Michael?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, agenda item number eight, receipt of correspondence. Review and discuss the Mass DPD regulations, three-ten CMR seven-point-four-one, regarding large entity reporting requirement that became effective September first, twenty twenty-three. So, this agenda item, I obviously read it. We want to put on record, this will apply to all of our vehicles that are over, over seven, eighty-five hundred pounds.
Eighty-five hundred pounds?
Uh, any, any comments on this correspondence from DP? No. Okay, uh, number nine?
You gotta vote to just place it on file.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Accept and place on file, that's okay.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to place on file.
Any community members here for item number eight? No, just checking. Okay, thanks. Beth, Beth makes a motion, we accept correspondence, put on file, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, Mario, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number nine, receipt of correspondence. Review and discussion of the acceptance of Ashworth, Ashworth Brothers Mill for the National Register of Historic Places for the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So, we saw that as well. Any comments on that?
No, this is just the process of getting structures placed on these historic registers that allow them to apply for certain tax credits for development, and it goes to a number of agencies.
So, this one was on a meeting earlier, and that was informing us that they were nominating.
Yep.
And this is informing us that they were accepted.